Yeah, we just have a motion to, uh, we have our motions to this miss require them to amend. Those are the dates of December.
Are we operating? All right. We're out in the, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for November 25th, 2013. We begin by rising to say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Riker.
Right here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsyth.
Here.
Okay, let's the record show that all trustees are present, we have a quorum, and we may officially conduct business. The first order of business is a review, an approval of the minutes of the November 12th, 2013 Village of Peatone Board Meeting. Trustees, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or if you see a reason to correct them, let us know what that correction might be.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to approve the November 12th, 2013 Village Board Meeting minutes as submitted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
First name.
And, um, Mr. Riker.
Okay. Motion carries, the minutes are approved as the official record. The, uh, we next come to the accounts payable and the payroll. Trustees, you have in your packet the payroll for the pay period ending November 9th of 2013 in the amount of forty-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. You also have, under accounts payable, bills from the general fund totaling forty, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-two cents, and on the water and sewer fund, bills totaling seven hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety cents. Total for these categories of bills is fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Now, uh, we are acting on a pay request later in the agenda from J&amp;J Newell for the sidewalk program, and in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars and eight cents. So, that check will be held until that part, we approve it officially, that part in the agenda. So, is there a motion to approve the, the bills with the, the hold on the check to J&amp;J Newell until later in the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Motion, oh god, I'm tripping over my tongue today. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee.
I'll second it.
Riker, to pay the bills with the note on the, the J&amp;J Newell amount being withheld pending approval later in the agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupkey.
Yes. Motion carries, and will state as noted with the sidewalk check being approved later in the agenda. Uh, we come to a public comment and/or questions about any non-agenda item. So, I would, uh, we have a group here from the Cub Scouts. Those who are watching this on TV probably heard some very young voices in the Pledge of Allegiance. And so, we have the scout leader here, and you are?
Hi, I'm Rachel Klutwick. I am Den Five Wolf Leader for Peatone Pack 315.
Loud and proud.
You are loud and proud.
And we're just here to observe today for one of our requirements for the wolf rank.
Okay. And, uh, I assume that's just to see how local government works?
Correct.
Good. I hope we give you a good example. Thank you. Anybody else here? State your name.
Hi, this is, I'm Judy Ostel. Um, I'm business owner downtown Peatone of Judy Sheer Pleasure at 108 North Second Street. Um, I probably could've chosen a better night than to have the children here at the time of what I have to say, but, um, I tore probably ten pages of notes trying to decide that I want to say this politely and with respect, but I have a lot of concerns on my mind about the village.
Okay.
I'd like to convey that I'm missing my senior grandson's basketball game tonight at Mantino just to be here, so, uh, that's how important this message is to me. I've been in business in Peatone for thirty-three years. I've seen several businesses come and go over the years, mostly go. I'd like to read you a mission statement that I prescribed, wrote down when we first opened up our business thirty-three years ago. Our lives bring about many stressful events: work, family, responsibilities, and physical stress. We want to create an atmosphere for you to get away for a few hours and relax and forget your cares. This is my promise to you, and I have kept that promise to my customers for thirty-three years. We have ladies who have been coming to our salon, Aunt Donna, for over thirty-five years, and with respect to them, this, this request is also some of their concerns. It's topic of conversation in the salon. We've had pork chop businesses downtown. We've had two restaurants leave on Second Street. We had a special coffee shop that was in where Throwbacks is now, um, and she had excellent, excellent product. We also had, Morrison's had a little ice cream parlor next to the Compass Insurance. There were three different gift shops that had been in our town. One right across the street here was Glenda's. We had one downtown called Decorinmore that Yvonne used to run, and also Angelo's that was right next door to me. There was a video store right across the street from me, and then they also put in a fitness center because they couldn't survive on the video store. In fact, except for the recent closing of Second Street Bar and a few months ago the beer stool, there were thirteen places in our town that you could buy alcohol within a three-square block area. I see on your agenda that, that you have some of that subject in your lineup tonight. We're losing Hoops Hardware, we're losing APA Auto Parts, we're losing JTR Heating, they're going to Moni. We used to have big parades, very large, fun parades, that all the families got involved. We used to have festivals downtown. We used to have block parties. There were two movie companies that came to our town. Tom Hanks made a movie right out on Beach of Blacktop. We had circulation from those people in town. We also had a movie made right there at our corner restaurant when Gary was running it that, that was by, Bill Murray's brother came to town and did a movie. They, they were here for days, all day and night, doing that movie, and some of our local people actually took part in that movie. I saw a movie the other night on Hallmark. I don't know if any of you caught it or not, but it was called A Town Called Nowhere, and it gave me goosebumps. I literally cried through half the movie. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but it's a Christmas movie, and it's really something that would be very, very interesting for you to watch. I saw, I witnessed a photographer across the street from me back in the summer. She was taking pictures of all the kids' prom pictures because they love our old buildings downtown. There was a, a wedding there this past weekend. The bride was out there, as cold as it was, in her wedding dress because they love the scenery. And I went up and got the photographer's name. She's from Fox and Hound. Um, and she said, "I love this old town. I love this town." She said, "It's, it just gives me such a warm feeling, my pictures." She said, "It just, it, they request to come down here when they've seen other wedding pictures. What's happening to us?" I take my customers from out of town when they come in from Richton Park, from Homewood. I get them from Oak Forest because there are relationships that I have made through the years in the places that I have worked. I take them down to Kathy's for lunch. I take them over to Tony's for lunch or dinner. I bought gifts next door at the gift shop. I used to frequent Glenda's all the time because it was easier for me to go around the corner and get my gifts than it was to drive down to the mall, and too many time is money. I've sent my own customers, you know, to those places. I also sent my own son and my grandson to Melanie's down at Victory Barber Shop to get a flat top because I know, I can't perfect a flat top, and Melanie does a great job, and so did Christie when she was there. I've personally used these businesses. Inland Printing, before they left. Drollies, I bought cars from them. Brenda's, I've gone for work there. The Logo Place out on the highway, I bought t-shirts and uniforms from them. Hoops Hardware. I was a Chamber member for over twenty-seven years, and I gave it from my heart. I took two weeks off of work in the summertime to help them with their festival, and never got a penny in my pocket for it. The girls had to hold things down for me. I've had some conversations with Kathy at Lucky Horseshoe. I don't know, I don't, they were all supposed to be here tonight, but I guess I'm the spokesperson. Kathy at Lucky Horseshoe, Melanie at the Victory Barbershop, Kelly at Le Mazon, we had long phone conversations. Brenda Teske at the chiropractor place, they were all supposed to come. Are you giving up on those of us who are trying to hang on? Because we really, really need our work. My girls need their jobs to make a living. Are you giving up on this town, and someday you'll just walk away and leave this board, and someone else will have to take over the mess? When we voted you all in office, it was with faith and hope that you were going to make a difference. Some of you, I've had personal conversations with about the desperate need for change. If you, there are things that are going to continue and just get worse, I may as well sell my business, I'll be out in the internet to somebody out of Chicago and just leave and stop trying to kill myself to, to make a living. One of the things that was really upsetting to me this week was, I had called originally and asked for a spot to speak tonight, and I realized that I didn't, I didn't really know for sure if I was going to because I've torn up so many copies of notes. But, I ended up pulling up the paper this week, and, and I heard through the grapevine that you had hired someone to try to pull new businesses in town. And then George broke my heart when I read your, your, your article. It said, quoting from George Gray, "Village Administrator George Gray said that it would be not focused on the existing downtown historic district, but would, for the most part, involve the new construction out on Route 50 and Wilmington Road." Really, George?
Can I explain that? I, reading that quote, I can understand what you're thinking. That is not, that is not the context. I can tell you that, just in the past two weeks, I've had conversations with two owners of hardware stores, trying to, you know, get something, a hardware store back in town, and I have offered the information from that study to those people. So, no, this is not purely for Route 50 and Wilmington, and it's not purely for the interchange, but we will use that information also for work downtown. Of the companies that they've matched us to demographically, we have already asked them about three or four, would they, these people normally come to a strip mall, would they think about coming into a downtown area? And, and the company is reviewing that right now. Okay? I apologize if it's upset you, I really do.
It's upset a lot of people, George. And some of the questions that I was asked, that I was supposed to ask you, and I really wasn't gonna go there, but I'm not quite sure how long you've been on the board, but wasn't that what you were hired for? And why has it taken just recently for us to start seeking out businesses? I came to Newell back several years ago because a friend of mine came out of Michigan. I don't know if you recall this meeting with you and I. A friend of mine came out of Michigan, and he took me down there to show me around the town, and it was absolutely beautiful. And I said, "My goodness, how, how do they keep this up?" He said, "Oh, they just get grant money." So, "How do you know about it?" "Well, I'll get you the paperwork." And I came in with a stack of papers about like that and handed them to you. It's been about seven, eight years ago.
I'm sorry, I don't remember that. We do look for downtown grants. We talk to the Main Street people, um, every six, twelve months to see what grants are available. And some of that is state by state, some of that is federal, um, and we do look for those grants. I can tell you, Planning Zoning Committee is doing a downtown study. They're looking at things like doing a pilot study for some facade improvements for grants for the downtown. Uh, that may be in next year's budget. That's what, some of the things they're looking at. But I just want you to, I just want to make it clear that we're focusing as much on the downtown as we are on every place else. Okay? I'm, I'm sorry if that, if that quotation led people to believe something else, but that's not the case.
Well, it didn't sound good. And, like I said, as soon as I read it, I was fired up again. I wanted the Monday, the meeting to be Sunday night because I just couldn't get it off my mind.
Well, I'm sorry if that's the case, if that wasn't the context of.
I think you should write a retraction for the paper because there are a lot of people upset that I can't get around to. I make it a point to personally go. Whenever a new business comes in town, I myself go and welcome them. I went to the beauty shop, I went to the barber shops, and said, "If there's ever anything we can do for you, please come to us. We'd be more than happy. We want to bring more people downtown." I've done it myself, which I really think would be a good idea for a few people from the board to do, you know? Anyway, I've even gone to the ice cream shops and bought ice cream for the neighbors and took them on Sundays, and milkshakes and things for them to try them out. Where do most of you have lunch? Where do most of you have dinner? Where do most of you get your haircuts? We also all have gift certificates at our places, that I'm quite sure you have families, that we would know you care. I know that you're tired of hearing about Mantino and Moni, and I am too. But you know what? Has anybody ever thought about sitting down with some of those people and, and doing some networking to find out how do they do it? There's, there has to be some secret to how they go about getting all of that stuff done. I've heard rumors, but I don't have enough background to know what, what the truth is. Can any of you say to your family and friends that you've kept your campaign promises? I heard about new plans for Peatone, and that's, I already talked about the, the report. Don't give up on us. We haven't given up on you guys, yet. This town isn't dying, the people are just giving up. We need new hope and a good effort now, not in a couple of years. For those of us hanging on, show us that you take your job seriously. And if you can't, then leave them and let someone else who really cares do their job. I don't think that we're asking too much. I've never asked any special favors in my thirty-three years I've been in business, and any of you that know me know that's true. Please stick your necks out and take a chance and give this town a chance. We did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Judy. I'm gonna move on the agenda now to the clerk clerk report and treasurer report. Those are in your file, trustees, for the purpose of updating you on the revenues coming in in the past month or so. Police chief is not here this evening. He is attending a training session that is a several-day session. So, we'll move on to the engineer's report, and Charlie, would you give us an update on what's happened with the stoplight project?
Sure. The stoplight at Route 50 in Corning. Our Phase 1 study, which included a geometric plan, typical cross-section, and traffic signal calculations, has been submitted to the state last month in October, and now we're awaiting their comments or approval. And then, once we have that, we can continue with the actual Phase 2 design and move forward with the project.
Okay. And, uh, I know that IDOT has, has their own schedule, but what's a likely times timeline of hearing back from them?
We, we would hope within the next month or two, we hear back, and then we would get any revisions to them quickly so we can get approval.
Okay. All right, let's move on to, trustees, any other questions? The, under, there is no old business, under new business, the first item is an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement. And trustees, we, closer we were here for the committee of the whole meeting, we had a representative from the company here at that time who was trying to cover three different board meetings on one night. So, that's the time that worked out, and, uh, George, do you have a, yeah, we have the coverage sheet. Do you wanna go through that?
Village currently has property and liability insurance through A.J. Gallagher and Associates. Workman's comp is not part of the program. Gallagher is forming a cooperative municipal clients with excellent claim histories called the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative. Gallagher approached the board a few months ago with this concept. The current plan is, is basically a current insurance rider coverage. Additional plan, a few unknowns. It's got a reduced, reduced exposure to risk generated from other entities, though there's still some there. The 2014 cost is fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars without workers' comp. With the cooperative, the village retains profits normally captured by insurance companies. Over a long-term retained monies can be used to pay down premium increases or be distributed to the members as dividends. Many policy lines have zero deductibles. There is a three-year commitment to the cooperative. The cooperative has the ability to determine the membership which controls the risk. Large claims are spread throughout the pool. We will retain the ability to select our own legal counsel to defend claims instead of being appointed one by the company, the insurance company. And the 2014 cost is fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars without workers' comp. And we will, of course, go with our current workman's comp policy. In order to ensure there is no lapse in coverage, a decision as to whether or not to continue with the current policy or join IMEC is necessary no later than the December 9th meeting. Joining IMEC will require adoption of the Intergovernmental Agreement Ordinance, which I have attached.
Okay. Trustees, just a quick review. As we stated earlier, uh, we've discovered over the years that if we can get into an insurance cooperative with other communities, that we can save money. We've done that with health insurance for the last four years. As a matter of fact, through A.J. Gallagher and Associates. And our current plan for liability is with them. This proposal that we are asking for action on tonight essentially will, has the potential to save us a few thousand dollars initially, but if we have claims, we'll, we will save even more because most of the deductibles have been waived if we get into this group that we would have to pay otherwise. And because the money from this group that would normally go into the profit for an insurance company, because we in effect become part of the insurance company, goes into a pool for all the municipalities, which, three years down the road, could very well result in us having money to reduce our premiums even, even further. And so, uh, do any of you have any questions relative to this? Okay? This would be ordinance 13-13, an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 13-13?
I make a motion we adopt the program.
Motion by trustee Wicker.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Riker to adopt ordinance 13-13, authorizing the execution of the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
And Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and that action is officially taken. Next item is an ordinance to amend the liquor code. George, you wanna go through that one?
Sierra Grill has closed, and Hacienda Grill has opened its place. Uh, Sierra Grill had a Class C liquor license, but its closure, Sierra Grill has forfeited that license. The attached ordinance amends the village code to reflect the change in the number of Class E licenses from one to zero.
Okay. So, this would be ordinance 13-14, amending the, uh, number of Class E liquor licenses which can be issued in the Village of Peatone relative to Sierra's Grill Incorporated. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 13-14?
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Hack, to adopt ordinance 13-14, an ordinance amending the number of Class E liquor licenses which can be issued in the Village of Peatone concerning specifically deletion of the one for Sierra and Grill. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Motion carries, and ordinance 13-14, reducing the number of Class E liquor licenses is officially adopted. Next item is an ordinance for the levying and assessing of the 2013 taxes. That would be ordinance 13-15. George, you wanna go through the explanation on this one?
Yeah. The levy ordinance stipulates the max on levy the village may establish, that's the property tax levy. The staff has prepared a levy ordinance reflecting a 3% increase in the levy. The 3% increase is intended to capture structures not currently assessed on the tax rolls. Those structures which are currently assessed will experience a levy increase equivalent to the 2013 Consumer Price Index at 1.7%. Please note, this does not mean the tax bills will go up 1.7% as the tax bill is a function of additional factors such as assessment and the action of other governmental units. It only means that the total amount of money the village may request collectively can increase by the percentage that we discussed. These standards indicate that corporate and special-purpose levies, when extended, would increase from five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars to five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars, corporate without bond and interest. As levy increase is stipulated at 5% or less, a public hearing is now required. Regarding the total of all funds, the general, for general corporate purposes, it levies two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, five-hundred dollars. For municipal auditing fund, it's five-thousand dollars. Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, it's ten-thousand dollars. The Social Security Fund is forty-five-thousand dollars. Medicare Fund is seventy-five-hundred dollars. Liability, Unemployment and Workers' Compensation Insurance Fund is seventy-two-thousand dollars. Police Protection Fund is eighty-thousand dollars. Police Pension Fund is ninety-thousand dollars. Total for all funds is five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars.
Okay. And, um, the, we need to adopt then ordinance 13-15, an ordinance for the levying and assessing of the 2013 taxes for the Village of Peatone. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Wicker, to adopt ordinance 13-15 for the levying and assessing of the 2013 taxes for the Village of Peatone. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and that ordinance 13-15 is adopted. It also requires a resolution to, uh, further carry out our responsibilities. George, you wanna explain that?
Yeah. In the event, you know, in the event that, due to assessed valuations, et cetera, we are not, uh, the county clerk and treasurer do not, do not ford the maximum levy, we have attached a resolution that in the event the county clerk finds it necessary to reduce the levies established in the levy ordinance to remain within the cap, the resolution directs the county clerk to limit the levy in this, in some specific funds. Without that direction, the county clerk can levy wherever he or she wish to reduce, wherever he or she wish to reduce. This, this shows the, the will of the, of the village board as to where they want those, if they need to, where they want those reduced. We usually just piggyback this right with the tax levy ordinance.
Okay. And this, uh, in essence, we, we specify at this point today?
Yeah. That the remaining funds shall reduce nickel amounts so that the total reduction for all funds is equal to the amount that the county clerk is required to reduce 2013 levy as a result of, required by law, in this municipal auditing fund, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, Social Security Fund, Medicare Fund, Liability, Unemployment, Workers' Compensation Balance Fund, and Police Pension Fund, out of those funds.
So, it applies equality to all funds?
It applies equally to all, but if it's only a small amount, they usually call us and ask us if there's a preference as to one particular fund that wants it to be reduced.
And this resolution, which would be 13-R14, in essence, directs the county clerk to take care of our wishes in terms of any limits or reductions in it, so that, because all of this money is dedicated funds, if it came arbitrarily out of one, it would impact, highly impact that particular area. So, is there a motion to adopt resolution 13-R14? How many pages? There it is. Resolution allocating tax levy to individual. Resolution allocating tax levy to individual funds of the village, property tax, extension limitation law as amended. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Callahan, seconded by trustee Hupkey.
Riker.
Riker. Okay. I was looking a way to get the resolution over. To adopt resolution 13-R14, allocating tax levy to individual funds of the village, property tax, extension limitation law as amended. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries and that resolution is passed. Now, going back to the-- when we allocated the bills, we're up at the one for pay requests for J. and J. Newell. George?
J. and J. Newell is the contractor for the 2013 sidewalk program. They've submitted pay request number one in the amount of $49,026.40. This pay amount would pay for the entire project. However, the village usually retains 5% of the pay amount for landscaping, et cetera. Therefore, the pay amount should be $46,594.80. The work has been inspected and approved by village staff.
And just as a matter of course, trustees will recall at the previous meeting, we released the retention from the previous year's sidewalk fund. So what we're doing is for the current years, we're also retaining that. Explaining this mainly for the scout. All right. So is there a motion to approve the pay request, pay request number one to J. and J. Newell in the amount of $46,594.80? Second. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsythe to approve pay request number one to J. and J. Newell in the amount of $46,594.80. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Motion carries and the check will be issued to J. and J. Newell. Next item on the agenda is consideration relative to the December 23 regularly scheduled village board meeting.
Yeah, there are actually two items relative to--
Yep.
--the December 23 village board meeting. It's scheduled for December 23, the day before Christmas Eve. If the board were just to cancel that meeting tonight is an appropriate time and a motion would be required. If you want to keep the meeting as scheduled, we can, of course, do that and no action is necessary.
And the second part of that is, should we decide to go that route, then a secondary motion needs to take place relative to paying the usual and customary bills. So first, I will entertain a motion to cancel the Village of Peatone board meeting for December 23, 2013. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Forsythe, seconded by trustee Wicker to cancel the December 23 Village of Peatone board meeting. I will-- we will note for the record, we're also canceling the committee of the whole meeting that would be on that night. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Now, relative to the December 23 Village of Peatone board meeting that got canceled, the normal bills that would be the payroll and the typical bills that is-- in our past practice, when we've canceled a meeting such as this, we have authorized the payment of the usual and customary bills, subject to ratification at the first meeting in January. Is there a motion to that effect?
No more.
Second. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Hupkey to pay the usual and customary bills that would have been paid at the December 23, 2013 board meeting, subject to ratification of the payment in January. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
And Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item relative to the village hall hours on Christmas Eve.
In recent years, the board has granted permission to close the village hall on Christmas Eve. Staff uses accumulated vacation or other compensatory time on this holiday if approved. A motion to close the village hall on Christmas Eve would be in order.
And as indicated, there's no cost to us to do this because our staff basically gives up compensatory time or a vacation day, thereby not obligating us to pay them for that day. Is there a motion to close the village hall on Christmas Eve?
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Forsythe, seconded by trustee Riker. Clerk, please call the roll. Getting ahead of you, aren't I?
Yeah, we're starting to talk a little fast.
It's getting close to me in the meeting.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
And Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries and the village hall will officially be closed on Christmas Eve, December 24th. All right. Moving down the agenda, we will talk to you after the-- Karen will talk to you after the meeting if need be. And we-- as far as correspondence, communications, petitions, just in the way of notice, you will recall, and people watching will recall, that the village joined an electrical aggregation group a year ago, First Energy, thereby locking in the energy rate for two years that everybody pays for electricity. First Energy is just sending out letters indicating that, reminding people that they've saved us so much money over the past year. And you are in there until the last bill of October 2014, you'll be saving at the same rate. So residents will find this if they haven't already got it. I got mine in the mail today. If you didn't get yours today, it'll probably come in the next few days. And somebody probably got theirs earlier in the week, last week. So just to give you a heads up on that. Let them do, is there?
I just have one that just popped in my head, just a reminder for folks that there's no parking on village streets after too much snowfall, so please bear that in mind.
I also have something about the village.
Yep.
I spoke with the-- one of the owners today with the new Italian restaurant that's gonna be opening soon next to the post. He's got his estimation that that restaurant will be open in the spring of 2014.
Okay. So sometime this spring, he's hoping to have that open.
Yes.
All right. That's good to hear.
There's also a gentleman here that I believe wanted to speak. He arrived a little bit late. Is there a possibility he hasn't been to speak?
Sure.
Thank you, trustee Hupkey. For those of you that don't know me already, I'm Glenn Nixon. I live in Bourbon, A., and I'm running for state representative in the Saturday Night District. I was gonna give you a little more information about who I am, but after hearing the compassionate plea for assistance, that's why I'm running. The state is in the same predicament it has been for the last 10 years, alienating businesses, raising taxes, making it harder for families to get by. And it's from Peatone to LaSalle, all the way down south Illinois. That's why things need to change. And as a police officer, career-long police officer, I've seen businesses have to move out of cities and villages and nobody wants that, I know. That's why I want to run for state representative, to lower our tax rate, to make it more reasonable for families to live and exist and open up business. So there are funds available from Springfield for enterprise so we can extend the release to local municipalities and to businesses to encourage that entrepreneurial spirit. Instead, our state crushes it. And I don't admire the job each of you have. I've been on the county board in Kankakee and I know how hard it is. And a lot of work ahead of you until things change in Springfield. That's why I want to run. That's why I want to get down to Springfield and help communities like Peatone and like Monee and like Mantino and Bourbon, A. and Coal City and Gardner. All across this district, we're struggling with the same things. And it has to change in Springfield before it changes locally here. They have to make that money available for economic funding. That's what I want to do. So I'll be a familiar face a little more often, and I thank you for the time allocation tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Glenn. Anything else? Hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the November 25, 2013 Village of Peatone board meeting.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsythe to adjourn the November 25, 2013 Village of Peatone board meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.